Roll please.
Please, please.
Oh, Alan, I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Conne. I'm sorry.
Wow, she's moved out already.
The short timer, and I'm thinking you're gone already.
Jesus.
So sorry.
I am not a taker.
All right, let me think about it for a minute.
Okay, but don't forget your microphone.
Done.
Okay.
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Here.
Commissioner Foster.
Hello.
Commissioner Janowski.
Here.
Commissioner O'Conne here. Commissioner Singh.
Here.
Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
And Chairwoman Zuber.
Here, and we also have, for the record, we also have Patrick Sloan and Erin Schluto, our illustrious staff members from the Planning Department, and we have Courtney Agusa from Foster Swift, our legal counsel here this evening, and we have a good-sized audience. Awesome. So, let's get started with the approval of minutes from the November 20th Board Meeting, or Planning Commission hearing. Anyone want to make a motion about that?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Awesome. Commissioner Watkins, and support.
Support.
Commissioner Watkins, move to approve the minutes, and Commissioner Weber, support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, but we have minutes from December 4th as well. Anyone want to make a motion about those?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber, and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We have an agenda with a couple of public hearings and some old business. Does anyone want to add anything to the agenda? Do we need to add anything, Patrick?
No additions.
Okay. Anybody from the Commission want to add anything to the agenda? All right, please don't. Did I say that out loud? All right.
Hot mic.
Yeah. Do you want to make, anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, Commissioner Singh?
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Singh, and support by Commissioner Watkins. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Patrick, do we have any communications we should know about?
No additional communications.
Okay, excellent. And we have a little section here for public comment on agenda items only. If you would like to speak on any agenda items, please go to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Anyone?
And this will be outside of the regular public hearing, which we'll be having on the Top Canton application.
Okay, yeah. All right. I will close the public comment section then. So, moving right along. We have public hearing for Top Canton LLC. We have, we are going to consider two things this evening. We are considering conditional rezoning for the parcels, and we are considering a preliminary PDD for the same parcels. And Patrick, when Patrick just informed me that he is going to discuss both of those items simultaneously, so with that, I'm going to ask Patrick to please tell us all about both of these items.
Thank you. The applicant is Top Canton LLC, and they've submitted two applications for the proposed development. The first is a conditional rezoning application for parcels located on the north side of Ford Road between I-275 and Lots Road. And there's a second application for a preliminary planned development district application at the same location that includes additional property to the north that is part of the proposed PDD, but not part of the proposed conditional rezoning. And so, I'm going to give both presentations at once and intermingle both conditional rezoning and the PDD applications because they're intertwined in terms of the proposal, and the PDD relies on the conditional rezoning, and the conditional rezoning includes some terms that make the PDD application possible. The overall development proposal for the PDD is to have two fast-food drive-through restaurants along the Ford Road frontage. The franchises have been noted in the application as Chick-fil-A and Portillo's, and those will be along the Ford Road frontage, so north side of Ford Road between I-275 and Lots. The PDD application also includes a four-story hotel located north in the middle of the overall site, and that is in the light industrial district outside of the conditional rezoning area, which I'll describe in a moment. And then, finally, on the north side of the site, there's proposed an indoor-outdoor golf driving range and recreation facility. This is on the north side of the site, located near Warren Road and I-275. In addition to the proposed uses, the planned development district application also includes the existing multi-tenant building east of the subject site, which is the Tile Shop and other tenant space there. So, that existing building is proposed to be included in the planned development district. Looking through some of the overall plans, we'll go through some of the overall development, the differences between the conditional rezoning and the PDD in terms of the boundaries and the process, and then get into the specific development proposals. So, this sheet that's on the screen here is a black and white of the overall site, and I'll zoom in on some of the specific areas, but on the bottom of the page is the Ford Road frontage, and on the left side of the page is the I-275 frontage. So, we're at the northeast corner of Ford and I-275. Along the Ford Road frontage itself are the proposed fast-food restaurants. So, going west to east, on the west side, there's the proposed Chick-fil-A, and in the middle, farther east, is the proposed Portillo's. And then, farther east of that is, this is the existing Tile Shop multi-tenant building. And there's one proposed access into the site. There's an existing drive that goes to the Tile Shop building west of the Tile Shop. This drive is proposed to be widened to allow for the additional traffic. Additionally, this drive is proposed to have a signal. So, there's a proposal at the drive for a proposed traffic signal, as well as a longer taper, right turn only, for westbound traffic going on Ford Road. And we'll also get into some of our traffic comments later in the review letter. And then, finally, there's the multi-tenant building to the east that's not proposed to change, with the exception of adding a few parking spaces on the north Going a little bit farther northward on the site, and we'll be bringing up other plan sheets as we go, so we'll be jumping back and forth between some of these areas. In the center of the site is the hotel, the proposed hotel. And then, finally, on the far north side of the site is the proposed driving range golf and entertainment facility. The building itself is located on the south side, and then the driving range itself is northward, and is generally in the southeast corner at Warren Road and I-275. And in a few slides, we'll have these overlaid with aerials, so that we'll have our bearings. Going back to the conditional rezoning, outlined in yellow on the aerial photo, is the specific area subject to the conditional rezoning application. The current parcels are located in the Corporate Park Overlay District, and most are zoned C4 with, as the underlying zoning. C4 is the interchange service district, but with the overlay of the Corporate Park Overlay District, it's very restrictive in terms of the uses. Every land use in the Corporate Park Overlay is a special land use, and so, items that are prohibited in Corporate Park Overlay include fast-food restaurants. So, east of 275 on Ford Road, there are no fast-food drive-through restaurants. We have a couple that are restaurants that were approved for pickup windows, but the pickup window restrictions, as I understand them, were applied pretty strictly, and don't really give a lot of predictability to an applicant that wants to do a drive-through fast-food restaurant. So, the proposal with the conditional rezoning is to rezone that subject area outlined in yellow to C3. That's general commercial, and along with the C3 district, the proposal is to include the central business district overlay on top of that area. And the reason for that is to allow for an application for fast-food restaurants. It would also be to fulfill some of the goals of the master plan. The existing master plan classifies this site as general commercial, and general commercial in the master plan recommends uses such as the C3 district that would allow for fast-food restaurants and multi-tenant commercial centers, things of that nature, typically the types of uses that we see on the west side of I-275 along Ford Road. The C3 district, I think I refer to it as general commercial, it's called regional commercial, and it's a fairly intense commercial. It doesn't allow for such intense uses that we might see in a C4 district, which allows for gas stations. And part of the conditional rezoning application is a proposal to include conditions in the rezoning, and among those conditions are prohibited uses. Among those prohibited uses are prohibiting gas stations and a number of other uses. The conditional rezoning application includes conditions that are offered by an applicant. So, in a conditional rezoning application, the township can't require conditions, but the applicant can propose conditions, and the township can determine whether or not to accept those conditions for the proposed rezoning. So, the reason that the applicant is proposing a rezoning with conditions instead of rezoning without conditions is to be able to propose uses that would be restricted in the district, excluding certain types of uses that they may not want to propose, or that they don't think the community would want there. So, there's a list of prohibited uses that we'll get into later. Also, because the conditional rezoning requires a conditional rezoning plan, it's a first introduction of the drive-through fast-food restaurants as part of the proposed plan. The conditional rezoning would not, it would not approve necessarily the drive-through restaurants. That would be done through the PDD. But the conditional rezoning would signal the applicant's intentions for that future application, or in this case, a concurrent And scrolling down a little bit more, so the previous slide had the proposed area for the conditional rezoning, and outlined in yellow here is the entire site subject to the planned development district application. So, on the south side of the site, where the proposed conditional rezoning is, to rezone it to C3 regional commercial with a central business district overlay, that fulfills many of the goals of the master plan, which include elimination of the Corporate Park Overlay District. Elimination of the Corporate Park Overlay District in total might not be ripe at this point, but what's proposed is a substantive area within the Corporate Park Overlay to be removed. So, it would be fulfilling one of those major objectives of our current master plan. So, going back to this map, on the north side of the site, there's this peninsula on the north side that's currently in the light industrial zoning district, and it's not part of the proposed conditional rezoning. So, the proposal is for the site on the north side to remain as light industrial zoning. In the light industrial zoning district, hotels are special land uses, and indoor-outdoor recreation facilities, including driving ranges, are also special land uses. So, part of the planned development district application is proposing those uses on the north side of the site, but it's simply requesting those uses through the PDD application instead of a special land use application. So, going back to the master plan, the labels at the bottom might be difficult to see, but the site here that's outlined in black is the conditional rezoning area, and this area in purple is classified as general commercial on the master plan, which recommends C3 types of uses in this area with central business district overlay. So, the application for the conditional rezoning is fulfilling many of those objectives of the master plan. And then, farther north, this light purple is classified as light industrial, which would remain as part of the application. And these are just the rezoning maps. These went out with public notices, and they just illustrate the area from a zoning standpoint. So, this area shaded in gray around the entire area east of 275. That gray area is the Corporate Park Overlay District, and then the crosshatching here is the site itself. And then, the last zoning map here, this crosshatched area is the PDD that's proposed on the site. So, the next part, describing the site before we get into the process and going through a lot of the particulars of the site, we wanted to talk about some of the natural areas of the site. And the applicants have submitted a lot of data with existing natural areas. And these crosshatched areas in blue are regulated wetlands. The crossed, crosshatched areas in orange are the unregulated wetlands. So, as we see here, there's quite a bit of regulated wetland within the site. And the proposal along Ford Road, we see that there's not a lot of regulated wetland. Those areas are where the proposed fast-food restaurants will go. And then, in this wetland area, on the south side of the site but north of the proposed fast-food restaurants, there's a lot of wetland there. And in that area, the applicants propose running a road through that area, but no proposed buildings. So, the applicants are proposing to minimize their impact through this wetland area to the south. And as we go farther north, there, there's, are a lot of different wetland areas that are separated out. So, there's a mix of upland and wetland areas, and in this northern part are where the hotel and the golf facility are proposed. The map here in the applicant's report gives a little bit of a sharper image in terms of the locations of the wetlands, and this is just all wetlands on the site, and the text there just describes some of the traits of those areas. So, that overlays it with the aerial just to get a sense of where those are. And then, included here on one of the plans, I won't zoom into it, but this is a sheet from the plans that actually overlays the wetlands with the site development. So, on this sheet, we'll be able to zoom in on those areas where proposed fill will be going for those wetland areas to see where wetlands are impacted, and just as important, those areas where wetlands are strategically preserved. And the last item that we want to note about the natural features is that the applicants also included a woodland study. They sampled a couple different areas throughout the site to look at the quality of the trees and the quantity of trees, and gave both an impact assessment and a description of the woodland areas in general. And what it revealed is that in the area where there are the high-quality wetlands near the southern part of the site, there's also some of the higher-quality woodlands. So, similar to the wetlands in this area, the woodlands in most of this area will be preserved. There will be a road running through it. There will be some proposed filling of wetland and clearing of trees, but that'll be minimized just for the sake of getting access to the north side of the site. A couple of items going to the circulation of the site. As we had previously noted, there's a drive that is in existence from Ford Road that will run into the site. And with Chick-fil-A restaurants, oftentimes, the concern is the length of the vehicles, the length of the line of the vehicles that will be going into the site. And so, on the far west side of the site along Ford Road, there's the Chick-fil-A restaurant in those purple or pink arrows. They are, they contain the double drive-through coming off of the main drive. So, as one enters from Ford Road and goes north, and then goes westbound into the Chick-fil-A drive-through, with the double drive-through, it'll hold several cars. But in the event that there are more cars than what the drive-through can accommodate, the applicant has provided an auxiliary stacking plan where cars will follow these blue area, blue arrows, and go north up to an area up in the northwest where there's proposed to be a turnaround location. It looks like a cul-de-sac. So, for those drive-through patrons, they would continue going north. That orange dot is where a staff person would be. They would be directed to turn around and start to stack up towards the drive-through of Chick-fil-A. So, I think according to the applicant, that added about 1,000 extra feet to the drive-through, and it would alleviate a lot of concerns that staff had in terms of the potential impact of a Chick-fil-A on the site and Ford Road specifically. If cars were to exceed the demand for this turnaround area, then we would recommend having an auxiliary stacking plan that goes as far north as the hotel or perhaps the golf facility, with the intent of keeping the stacking cars from being backed up onto Ford Road. And it also helps that the Chick-fil-A restaurant is located on the west side instead of on the east side, because on the west side, there's a longer distance between the restaurant and the common drive, so there's more area for stacking, which will help for this particular franchise. On the east side is Portillo's, and there is an existing Portillo's drive-through in southeast Michigan that's in Sterling Heights. And based on our review of aerial photos, there haven't been any indications of excessive demand there where it's backed up on the adjacent road. So, we think that the proposal from Portillo's is acceptable. If in the event it exceeded the demand, we could work with the applicants to get an auxiliary plan to go northward with the stacking spaces towards Chick-fil-A and continue the model similar to Chick-fil-A. So, taking a, taking a step back from those plans themselves, the process of the review is as follows. The first is that the Planning Commission reviews the conditional rezoning application and holds a public hearing, which is this evening. Based on the findings and the plans, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation on the conditional rezoning application, and that recommendation goes to the Board of Trustees for final action. Because that's a rezoning amendment, or a zoning amendment, or a rezoning, the Board holds two readings on that amendment. Concurrently, the applicants have applied for preliminary planned development review, and so, there's also a public hearing this evening for the preliminary planned development district application. Our recommendation on the conditional rezoning is approval. Our recommendation on the preliminary planned development district is to defer action, otherwise tabling it, to an upcoming meeting in order to get the traffic impact study review letter from the Township's Traffic Engineering Consultant. We expect that within the next week or so, and we're hoping to have that ready and with that prepared for Planning Commission review at the next available Planning Commission meeting. Looking forward, if the preliminary planned development district is recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, that also goes to the Board of Trustees for final action. Now, if the conditional rezoning is approved by the Board, and the preliminary planned development review is approved by the Board, the next step after that is final planned development district review. So, even when the preliminary planned development is recommended for approval and subsequently approved by the Board, if that happens, the applicants will return to the Planning Commission for another round of planned development district review, which will include a public hearing and final review of the plans that you see before you this evening, subject to any modifications between now and then. And then, the final step would be the applicants applying for site plan review, which would require all the site plan details of the zoning ordinance, so landscaping, dumpster enclosures, lighting and photometric, et cetera. So, there are a few more steps in the process, and additional review steps for the Planning Commission if the application moves forward. One item I want to mention with the site plan review is that the proposed planned development district application includes many of the details that would otherwise be required on a site plan. So, there's a landscape plan, there are photometric plans, there are elevation plans. So, a lot of the information that we need to eventually make decisions on a site plan is already there. So, we can get a really good visual representation of what's proposed by the applicant in the plans before you this evening. And the next, the last item I want to mention before we get into some of the aerial perspectives and the specific areas, is that what's proposed is relatively new on this side of the highway. This side of the highway, east side of 275 along Ford Road, it doesn't have fast-food restaurants like these, but it has a lot of elements that we also see on the west side of 275. So, it has big box stores, it has Sam's Club, it has Home Depot, it has Walmart. It also has Imagine Theater, it has multi-tenant commercial centers. So, it has a lot of those same elements. It just doesn't have fast-food drive-through restaurants, and this would represent a change over the development pattern that we've seen in the past. On the other hand, with highway traffic and Ford Road traffic, if anybody currently wants to go to a fast-food restaurant in Canton, all traffic has to go on the west side of 275. West side of, on Ford Road, west of 275. So, a lot of the traffic is being pushed in that direction. And over the next couple of years, MDOT has a boulevard project in that very same area to increase capacity on that road and widen it at boulevards in Michigan-left turn lanes. So, what we would be seeing on the east side of the highway is it would be drawing some traffic to the east, and that's in the traffic study. It also will have the effect of dispersing some of that, so not all 100% of the fast-food drive-through trips will be going on the west side of the highway. But again, it's consistent with the master plan recommendation for C3 and central business district overlay. What this also does in terms of locating fast-food restaurants in this location is it does not only fulfill the recommendations of the master plan, but it also takes off some of the pressures we have on the west side of 275 along Ford Road for these types of uses. We've had fast-food restaurants look west of 275 on Ford Road. They look for infill pieces. In some cases, they fit, like in the Raising Canes example that was recently approved, where the Friday's Restaurant is. In other areas, there's just not room for a lot more fast-food restaurants, depending on parking lot sizes, available parcels, and trying to contain commercial development at Canton Center Road, maybe a little west of Canton Center Road. But the master plan doesn't recommend expanding the commercial district westward along Ford Road to continue expanding westward. Right about where it ends now, on the west side of Canton Center Road where those existing commercial areas are, that's about the boundary the master plan recommends and the zoning ordinance recommends for the commercial area that we want to maintain. So, I know we're still, we're looking down the road a few miles here, but as we look at demand for commercial development, we want to locate that in our commercial areas where we've planned in order to contain commercial development where it's planned, and to try to prevent further expansion in areas that are not planned for commercial. So, the, some of the last parts of the review will be getting into some aerial perspectives and some plan sheets that the applicants have given in color that get into a lot more details of what's proposed and how the ordinance applies. So, this first aerial perspective is on the west side of 275 looking eastward. So, there's the golf drive-through facility, or drive, driving range facility, not a drive-through. You'll see those in a minute, though. Golf driving range facility, the hotel, and Ford Road and I-275 interchange, and the two drive-through restaurants here along Ford Road. And we can go back to these a little bit later. Here's another perspective, looking from east to west. So, behind it all is I-275, driving range, parking lot, the hotel, and then we'll go up to Ford Road here, and those are the fast-food restaurants. And then, this is looking northward, so looking south to north. This is the I-275 interchange, a relatively recent photo, as you see from the construction, and the proposed drive-through restaurants. And then, you can faintly see the proposed road running through the site until it gets to the hotel, and then, farther north, the golf driving Here's a photo with the driving range imposed along I-275. So, there's a multi-tenant sign. There's a couple of multi-tenant signs that are proposed on the site. Those, that's in the report. We can address that later. There's quite a few items to, to address this evening, but I just wanted to call that out at this point. And then, as you see, the poles with the netting to contain the golf balls is up there. There's a height modification proposed for the poles. And then, this is an image looking southward, down 275. So, very similar. A lot of the trees will, will remain outside of the clearing area, but there will be some visibility from And then, this is another rendering. The proposed distance between the parking lot and I-275 trail is about 15 feet, and there will be some landscaping there, so it may not look quite as close there, and it'll be softened by trees. it'll be softened by trees. So the next item I want to mention is the lighting. So there are some light fixtures that are building-mounted that will illuminate the driving range area. And there's a photograph here for lighting to show how the building-mounted lighting shines outward onto the driving range area. This is a sample from a different community, so this is not comparable to what we would see in Canton. And as you see there, a lot of that light is directed to be contained on the site itself. It's not a full cutoff because it does have to shine outward some, but it is strategically located in place to keep the lighting on the driving range area. So the applicant has given us specification sheets, we've asked for a few additional details just to ensure the lighting is kept on-site and that any concerns with traffic along 275 can be addressed. But the applicants have given a photometric plan, and the photometric plan does show that the illumination levels at the ground are within ordinance limits, so there's no concern about that, it's just the visibility of the fixtures from I-275. And with some of the data the applicant has, we think we can get a lot of those questions answered. In the plans themselves, there are renderings of the proposed building, and there's a modification request for the driving range golf building to be less than 50% brick, but the brick would still be the predominant material, it would just be a mix of brick, metal, ephesus, and And we can always go back to these, I just wanted to have these in a short version of the presentation. There is a proposed modification for signage. Most of the modifications are related to the golf facility and the signage. There's a little bit of a signage modification request for the menu boards for the fast food restaurants, but most of the signage requests are from the golf facility. And those, one of our top conditions for any signage would be that any modification given for signage, the condition we'd recommend is that it relates only to on-premise signage, signage that's on the premise and relates only to the uses within the PDD. Next up, there are some renderings of the hotel itself. Hotel is proposed to have at least 50% brick. And the hotels are proposed to be located in the Light Industrial District. The Light Industrial District has a max building height of 50 feet and four stories, so the proposed hotels are 50 feet high and four stories. Most of the commercial districts have a height limitation of three stories, but in Light Industrial, the limit's four stories, so they can fit the four-story hotel within the zoning of the Light Industrial. There are other hotels in Canton around 275 and Ford Road that have received either variances or height modifications in the past to go four stories, so this would not be our only four-story hotel in the area. The next set of renderings is for the proposed Chick-fil-A. They have the two-dimensional as well as some three-dimensional of what the restaurant and the drive-through facility will look like, also an outdoor dining area. And then we have a few renderings here of the proposed Portillo's Restaurant, again, two-dimensional, and then there's some 3D renderings as well. They also have an outdoor dining area affiliated. And then the drive-through area will have a canopy, will have a brick column base supporting the canopy. And some of the last things we want to mention are the Traffic Impact Study. The Traffic Impact Study noted that there were some existing deficiencies as well as future deficiencies, future deficiencies based on just growth without the development, as well as future deficiencies with future growth and the development. So the traffic study recommends a series of improvements, many of them relate to optimizing signal timing at different times of the day, so existing signals that are in existence to optimize the timing and patterns of those. That's something that we'll have continued discussions with MDOT and Wayne County because those signals are under their jurisdictions. At Ford Road and Lots, the study recommends installing a pedestrian push button for the east-west pedestrian crossing, installing a southbound right-turn overlap signal, and optimizing the timing. And then finally, at Ford Road and the site drive where the proposed signal is, the traffic study recommends constructing a right-turn deceleration lane, which is proposed on the site plan, and also installing a fully activated traffic signal, which is also proposed. We have some follow-up questions about some of the phasing that would be in that signal itself, but the proposed signal is proposed there. And the aerial map that's shown here is just the traffic study location and the intersections. And then the last few pages are just the landscape pages that are there that I don't need to go in too much detail. The last thing that I'll say about the application is because it's a Plan Development District application, two major key items with those are, first is that there have to be proposed definite benefits to benefit the site and the community at large. The second is that a Plan Development District application allows the Planning Commission and Township Board to approve certain modifications from the zoning ordinance. So first, the proposed definite benefits. The proposed definite benefits are preservation of natural areas, specifically in the southwest part of the site. The applicants are proposing two Level 3 EV charging stations at each of the two fast food restaurants, and two Level 2 charging stations at the hotel and at the golf facility for a total of eight chargers. The applicant also proposes to connect the site to the I-275 trail from Ford Road, including the installation of bicycle parking, a bench and bicycle repair station that'll be located near the front of the Chick-fil-A Restaurant. Another definite benefit is allowing free gameplay at the indoor-outdoor golf driving range for high school golf teams and charities serving youth mentorship, leadership, and empowerment during certain days and certain hours. And finally, a definite benefit offered is allowing Canton to use the hotel meeting room for up to 50 people up to 12 times per year. This would allow Canton to provide group meeting space in this area on the east side of the township. For the modifications, page four of our staff report details the modifications requested by the applicant. Basically, they're in seven different categories in terms of topic-based items, most of which apply to the golf facility. The modifications relate to onsite, on-premise signage, location of parking for the fast food restaurants. And then for the golf facility, there's modifications for building materials being less than 50% brick, some of the lighting orientation, the height of the poles containing the net, the trash enclosure location. And then overall to the site, there's a modification request for wetland setbacks, which will be determined in more detail during final PDD review once we have those specific setbacks outlined. So I'll conclude it there with the staff report. And again, our recommendation is, a recommendation to approve the conditional rezoning, and the recommendation for the preliminary PDD is to defer action and table it pending receipt and review of the Township Traffic Engineering Consultant's Traffic Impact Study Review. So that concludes our review, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Patrick. So this is a public hearing, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins to open a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Awesome. Public meeting is open, public hearing is open. Do the project, multiple project sponsors wish to add anything to what Patrick had
I can't, I can't turn up an opportunity to stand in front of my microphone and talk, so appreciate it. It's been really exciting to be here tonight.
Could you, I'm sorry interrupting you, but could you please tell us who you are, who you represent?
Oh yes, my name is Steve Robinson with Broder Saxy, and we are the project developers.
Thank you.
I want to just take you back really quick because I think it's interesting to find, when we go through these is to see how much change has happened. So I got this really weird phone call, this is, everybody knows this intersection, it's been there, sitting here forever, and many of my peers have tried to develop these properties in the south and in the north over the last year. So when I got a phone call last winter from a guy that used to work, that used to work with me, saying, "You really got to take this on." And I said, "You're nuts, pass, thanks." And he convinced me, I went and met with Mr. Jacobs, who owns the property, and his family. After a couple of months, we decided we're going to try to take this thing on. And so in May, I don't know if I, my technologically advanced.
But you have someone with you who is?
There we go. So this is, I just thought this was interesting because I went back and this is my GPS, which I always, whenever I start a project, I always have to walk it. I want to be on the ground, I want to see what's out there. So in this case, it was May 10th, 2022, was the day I first walked this project. And by the way, there were a lot of ticks that day because I did a lot of tick pulling when I got out of the woods. I spent about an hour and a half walking around. I had heard through the grapevine that at one point, our Family Golf Entertainment, if you don't mind, I'd like to try to get right by that right now and introduce Kevin Noack from, who's representing Top Golf today. Oop, there we go, I just blew it, so go ahead.
We're so surprised.
I know, you're surprised.
Yeah, hi everyone, I'm Kevin Noack, I work for Arco Murray Construction, we're the design builder for Top Golf, as I'm sure you guys could have guessed based on some of the renderings, but pleased to be here and would love to field any questions you guys have. I'll let Steve continue on with the presentation, though.
All right, so now we know that it's Top Golf, and I don't have to say Family Golf Entertainment Center ever again. So we knew that they were out here looking, and I think you probably heard over the years that they had looked out here on the north side, they looked out here on the south side. And so I walked out there, and if you look at, there's actually a geopoint, like right in here where it says, "Beginning of Hitting Base." Because when I stood out there and I got past all the woodlands and I got through all the wetlands, and I came onto this big open field, and I said, "This is where Top Golf belongs." They don't belong on the southwest corner, they don't belong in the woods, they belong right up next to the expressway, up on the, on the north end. Now we just got to figure out how to get them here. So you can see, I spent quite a bit of time walking around up on Warren Road and looking at the Warren Road Bridge and overpass, and I actually took some pictures, looking down off the overpass. I think that was kind of timely, Patrick, as we, as we get to the, what we're talking about as far as pedestrian circulation as such. So it's really interesting to see that as we develop this plan over, you know, how close we really are. But that's not to say that we haven't made a lot of improvements along the way. So I'd like to thank Patrick, all the staff here in the township. It's been a really amazing experience. We sat down, I think, I don't remember what the date was, it was probably last summer, I think originally, or last spring, to originally talk about this. And the opportunity to evolve this plan before we actually got to this Planning Commission has been really a pleasant experience working with the township. I think we're on our fourth or fifth in the middle, we've made tremendous strides, we've eliminated an acre of pavement on this project since we started, which is a substantial amount of pavement. And we've really enhanced the plan all the way along. And I just wanted to appreciate to take an opportunity to thank the township for this process. It's difficult, we're obviously a bit frustrated that we're not here with a, with a traffic study in our hands since we submitted the traffic, our traffic study last July, but we are where we are and we're excited to keep it going. So I'm not going to go really deep into this plan because I think Patrick's done a really nice job of telling us, we're here, we're enthusiastic, we're excited, all of our tenants are represented here today, so any other questions you might have, we're here and ready to answer.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the group here? Okay, very good, thank you. All right, does anyone from the public want to speak about this? Mr. McCoslin, Mr. McCoslin?
Good evening, I am Daniel McCoslin, I'm representing our business across the street, 2011 North Lots Road. I'm excited to see this project take place. I believe it should be approved, it's going to bring a new synergy to the area, which has long been coming. If we can get some development going there, get rid of the corporate overlay, as we know that's been a huge failure for everyone. Let some innovation take place, like I always say with folks like this. Yes, we're talking fast food, but big deal, fast food is everywhere. And it's just, what do you say food is today? Fast food is what, picking up out of a car. So I think you're, you're doing a good job of what you've laid out. It's gonna, again, it's going to be a synergy for that area. And, you know, if you look on the agenda, you're going to see us here next, next month. So these are all going to hinge together. So in allowing these folks to proceed is going to allow exciting things to take place in the area. So I do believe it should be approved, wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead, Mr. McCoslin.
Good evening, Robert McCoslin, 2011 Lots Road. We've known Mr. Jacobs for a long time, known him for 40 years. He's, he's been a good neighbor, he's not there, so he's been a good neighbor. But I, I think the, the time has come for the technology to drive this. And I'm, I'm a big, I'm a big fan of Top Golf. I was at the first one at MGM in Vegas when they opened, and I came back and I told Dan, I says, this is, this is what is going to be the future of entertainment for, for our young kids and old guys like me. Because, you know, I like to golf, too. And I said, just the whole atmosphere of the Top Golf thing drew, drew a lot of different people together at different times. And it was perfect for this area, so. As we, as we talked and talked to other people and tried to do some assemblage, I guess Steve was brought in and did a good job on this. Brought some, some services to that area that were needed. You know, when you talk, I don't know how many hotel developers I've talked to, but they'll say, unless you have services to back up the hotel, you know, nobody's going to come there. And I think you've hit it right. The only thing I would like to see, and you know, if anybody knows me, they've, you've always heard, I'd like to see regional detention in that area. There's a creek that runs through there. MDOT has the shoulder that they've just improved, they got 180 feet right away on that, on the ramp. I think regional detention there would really serve the community. It would help drain all the commercial to the north and to the west. This is something that's been way overdue, and I think, instead of jumping through all these hoops, we need to focus on this area because, let's face it, it's the last area in this corridor that is going to bring new development. We don't want old development, we want new development. And I think you'll be seeing other things brought to the table in the next few, three, four weeks, and I hope you give it a lot of consideration and congratulations with your project and.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything?
Close the public hearing.
Great, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Ocon to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I am going to start with Commissioner Watkins for your thoughts.
Thank you, Ben Chair, so, super quickly, if I could, I'm not sure if the developer and the owner are here, but I wanted to start by saying this is, it sounds like we found the, a good place to put a but I wanted to start by saying this is, it sounds like we found the, a good place to put a Chick-fil-A finally. That's not west of the freeway. Super quickly, and I don't know who this is addressed to, but I kind of wanted to understand the nature of the, of the development and ownership piece for the land. Having, listen, Rich Broder and Todd Saxey do a fantastic job in their stuff in Detroit, but I wanted to understand exactly what the nature of the, of the relationship will be between the landowner and the developer. I don't know who's gonna, who can answer that right now.
So Mr. Jacobs and his family are the contract seller. So we are purchasing the Tile Shop building from that family, as well as vacant land from either Robert or his family, family members. We're, we do have a partnership put together for the purchase, which includes Broder Saxey, as well as a couple other, a couple other people involved. Myself as one of the partners as well.
Got it, thanks for clarifying. And then just a follow-up question, so what's the nature of the land sale right now? Where are we in the transaction?
We're in due diligence.
Got it. And then lastly, so this is big, right? This is a big development.
I put that in the big range, yeah.
It's, it's a hotel, and it's, and it's a few, right, fast food restaurants in a, in a space that's pretty large. So talk to me about what other development incentives or abatements that you're going to be seeking on this particular development? And then if there's some phasing to the development, can you talk to me about what comes first? Because I didn't see that in the, in the docs.
This is the entire plan, there's no, there's nothing else coming for this property. Our, our plan is to do this all in one phase.
Got it. And then any additional tax abatements, development incentives being sought for the development at all?
Sorry, is there?
Additional tax abatements or development incentives at all being sought? Can you talk about what those are?
Anything we can get.
Fair.
So we just started, we just started those conversations. Yeah, I mean, it, it's, there's been, we've had some curveballs along the way here. We continue to go, specifically, we've had up in that north field where we're putting Top Golf. When we first started this project, that field was a field, it was not wet. And based on prior wetland surveys and delineations that were done, permits that were issued on this property, we were understanding there were significantly less wetlands up on the north end. Now, the good news is, it's all scrub shrub, low-quality wetlands. The bad news is, it costs just as much to mitigate that wetland as it does any other wetland. And, you know, that, that's where, that's where the issue for us is from a cost standpoint, as well as some of the shared infrastructure that's going in, such as light and improvements to the intersection.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, you'll be seeking maybe like Brownfield or some other?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes, Patrick, we, I was reading through that and that corporate district overlay, which we are trying to eliminate. The plan is to eliminate that slowly, or you said it's not time yet to just eliminate that, that. So I'm just wondering, why don't we come up with a plan where we eliminate the whole thing and, and we don't have to go through these changes or when a new person comes in? Because we are trying to develop that area, there are many more projects like that will come. And every time, we'll have to go through this process. So why not just go with it once and change that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And something that we've discussed among staff and amongst other divisions and departments within the building in terms of, not necessarily whether to keep the corporate park overlay, but in what timeframe and how to eliminate it and what to put in its place to substitute it. I think the current master plan does a good job of recommending the C3 district and recommending the central business district overlay. At the same time, we're also working on a new master plan, which we hope to have adopted early in 2024. And later in the agenda, Aaron will be presenting on the next phase of that project. So we're getting into some exciting parts of that project in terms of design and future land use. So I think the timing is, is coming up soon in terms of going through the process of proposing elimination of the entire corporate park overlay. And then the master plan will help us with some of those questions we have about what goes in its place, what substitutes it. And in most areas, it's going to be the central business district overlay. It'll just be a matter of what the appropriate underlying zoning district is. So I think we're very close on that. I think as we draw to a conclusion with the master plan process, we'll get much more clarity in terms of where we want to go with it. And I think that will probably be one of the first major initiatives that we undertake under the new slash upcoming master plan is substitution of the corporate park overlay district.
All right, thank you. Next thing is about traffic. I know we don't have the traffic impact study now, but that would be my concern as we, as we go forward with this project. Would like to see how that impact, especially if we are developing this area and more projects are coming in that area. We don't know how big or small, but traffic is going to be a big headache for that part of the city. And lastly, I know we talked about community benefits, and then Patrick mentioned few, which we are excited and thank you very much for, for doing that. I'm a golfer myself, and whenever I go out of town, out of state, I find out that prices, the green fee for me is way more than the resident of that city, sometimes three times more. Is that something you're planning for Canton residents to have a lower fee?
Asking for a friend?
I, I wish I could say the answer to that is yes, but I think that's above my pay grade. Typically, it's the flat rate just based on the market, not, no changes for residents.
I thought I'd try, but thank you.
They, they do offer military discounts, so there's that.
Join the Marines. Early.
That's all, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Singh, Commissioner Ocon.
I think it's a, a great project, it's exciting to finally develop that area. I think it's a good, good mix, keeping a lot of the, a lot of the wetlands there. And I have no problem with the rezoning. I think, I agree with Patrick, and I think we should table the, the preliminary PDD just right now because I, I do have concerns too. If we're going to add another light between Lots Road and the 275, I mean, we're talking two restaurants that are, have, are high-volume, that have the same peak hours. So it's, and there's only, from the preliminary plans, there's only one way in and one way out. So that, that would bring a red flag for me. But I guess we have the traffic study coming. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ocon, Commissioner Eickenberger?
Yes, thank you, I agree with Brian. I didn't think they'd be able to figure out a way to get a Chick-fil-A on Ford Road. So pretty amazed that you guys came up with a plan that got it there. So I don't have a problem with the rezoning, but I agree with what everyone else has said about the traffic. I don't want to make any decision until we get that traffic study back because we need to make sure it's not a danger on Ford Road.
Great, Commissioner Weber?
I don't really have much to add. I love the project, I'm absolutely in favor of it. My biggest concern pending the traffic study also is adding another light on Ford Road. That light that's in front of Home Depot and Walmart already creates a tremendous amount of bad traffic problems. I guess that's redundant. Between 275 and that area and adding a light in that short, another light in that short a distance, I think is problematic. I, I would sincerely hope that that is not an issue that would be a downfall for this project. I got to believe there's a lot of smart minds in the traffic engineering field that can, that can be overcome. But that's, that is a problem, and I think it does need to be addressed properly before we can act on the PDD. The only other comment I have is regarding the, the parking up at, at Top Golf. And I'm glad to hear you say that this plan has been revised multiple times, that you've whittled down the amount of pavement that's going to be in this area. And I can't remember the exact number of parking places that are there, 450 some sounds right to me. Just, we've had a lot of conversations about an overabundance of parking in this township and, and the water runoff and that sort of thing. I just want to make sure, and I guess maybe this is directed more to staff than it is to you folks. Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not creating more parking surface than we absolutely need to. I don't, I don't want to see any more concrete slash asphalt unless it's absolutely needed, especially given the nature of the lands that we're dealing with in this area. So that's just, just my feedback. On that, I think it's great, can't wait to see it and attend myself, to be honest. So, thank you.
Commissioner Weber, Commissioner Foster?
I will start by saying that I'm glad that we can finally say Top Golf instead of Top Canton. I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it through this meeting, saying Top Canton or Golf Entertainment Complex, so I'm glad that we got that out of the way early. I've spent the last few months with Commissioner Eickenberger and Commissioner Zubor on the Master Plan Advisory Committee. And one of the things that we've consistently heard is that we need something in Canton that would draw people here, that would have young people want to stay here and hang out and do fun things. And I think that this meets that need for a lot of people within our community. And it's something that some older folks in Canton would like as well. I have an 18-year-old son, I've spent countless amount of time driving to the Top Golf in Auburn Hills. And so it'll be great to stay closer to home. So I'm very excited about this project. And like the other commissioners said, I'm excited that we figured out a way to bring Chick-fil-A to Canton, not on the other side of 275, which I think would have created a headache and a ton of issues with traffic. I am concerned about traffic at this location, so I'll wait to see what the traffic impact study says. Patrick, there are no issues with the signage along 275 with some of the things that we've dealt with and talked about in the last couple of weeks?
Some of these, some of those items that are proposed as modifications for the signage, one of them relates to a multi-tenant sign. So the multi-tenant signs that we see in the community, the, the large ones, based on the zoning, there's one allowed for the site, and there's one proposed along Ford Road. So near the entrance, there's a multi-tenant sign. There's a second multi-tenant sign proposed along I-275. And that one, we have some concerns with the size of it because the size is larger than what the township allows for the multi-tenant signage. So we do have some concerns about the, the area and the height of it because it exceeds those. We also have some concerns with some of the onsite signage for the, the Top Golf, I can call it that now, the Top Golf facility itself. But starting with the multi-tenant sign that's near I-275, the ordinance doesn't necessarily prohibit a multi-tenant sign in that location, but those multi-tenant signs have rules that apply only to the on-premise commercial advertising. So what they're used for and what they're regulated for are so that a collection of onsite users can collectively put their signage on one structure. So with, with the proposed sign, our, our first recommendation would be that it include on-premise advertising only, that it is a bona fide on-premise sign so that Chick-fil-A, Portillo's, Top Golf, the hotel chain, even the Tile Shop and whoever's in that building, since they would all be subject to the same PDD. As long as it's on-premise, related to the site itself, then that would be our recommendation. There's a, a number of, of legal questions that go along with that when we talk about on-premise signage. But from our standpoint, that's one of the introductory recommendations we wanted so that it was very clear between the signage that the applicant's requesting, it's area, location, height, but also when we get into what's actually on the sign and what the sign's intended for, that it is a bona fide on-premise sign.
One more question, is there event space in the golf facility? I was just wondering that because the community benefit mentioned the event space at the hotel, but not within the golf facility. So I was just wondering if you had, if that was there? Because a lot of people in our community are like for space to hold events.
Yeah, there, there is event space on the third floor. A lot of corporate events are actually held there. I mean, I'm from Chicagoland and I know we do outings there all the time. But, but yes, to answer your question directly.
Yeah. Yeah, great to see this come to our community, great to have a project so big that maintains a lot of green space. So, thank you.
Real quick, I don't, I don't want to slight the people from Portillo's to think that we're not excited about Portillo's coming too. It's just that we've been talking about Chick-fil-A for so long that.
There's a lot of talk about Chick-fil-A in Canton.
Yes.
What's that? Yeah. We, we want you to.
I'm excited about Portillo's.
Exactly. Commissioner Cruz?
Great project, great uses. Glad to see something's going into this location. Just a few concerns. So you have a traffic study, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of, you've got the hotel, two fast food, and Top Golf, all going through one access point. That's a challenge, regardless of how long the property is. Did you explore a Warren access?
We did.
The challenge there?
Yeah, the challenge there is it's limited access. We can't, we can't cross the limited access right away up on the north end there.
You can't cross?
Warren, Warren Road is almost, aren't all but the last, I think, 25, 20, 20, 25 feet of our property on the north side where it abuts Warren Road is still limited access right away. So it's federal highway administration controlled.
It's hard to understand you, yeah. It's.
Federal.
Yeah.
So we have, so I-275 is a limited, is what they call a limited access, limited access freeway.
Right.
You cannot access into that, all right? So when, when they, in and around limited access freeways, the, a lot of the cross streets were, are also limited access for a certain distance. So like our frontage on Ford Road, we can only make an entrance so close to the ramp because we hit limited access right away. On the north side of the project, our, almost our entire frontage is still limited access right away, even though it's up on Warren Road. So we couldn't cross, we can't cross that. And I've never successfully been able to cross a limited access highway in my career.
Your drawing shows 29 feet unlimited right away.
Yeah, I think it's 25 and a five or 20.
Is what is shown on the site, the survey, you know?
And then we have significant topography up there.
Okay.
And there was, there's all the, there's one other complication as it relates to the wetland. We're trying to make that connection. We did look at it, we thought for safety that we would put the emergency access in because it doesn't have all of the, the restrictions of, of a, of a full, full service entrance.
So to put an emergency access in, you still need permission from them, correct?
We can get the access in on that last 25 feet.
Just for emergency purposes?
We can get it in for emergency purposes. Like I said, there's other complications besides just limited access, like.
Besides the wetlands?
Between the wetlands and topography, yes.
Topography?
Yeah, we have, there's a significant slope between Warren Road and our property.
Tile Shop, is that staying?
That, that building is staying, yes. Tile Shop is staying, and we're working with a new tenant for the vacancy.
Okay, so the new tenant, that's what I'm concerned about, is you have the Tile Shop, but you could put a more intense use that the traffic study did not anticipate. So that's kind of the, the warning that I'm giving you is make sure you have an intense use so you don't have to redesign the whole thing when you have a new tenant, you know what I'm saying? But the Tile Shop.
I don't know off the top of my head what assumption she used for that vacancy.
I would look into it, yeah.
I know that the traffic study has already, already been reviewed by MDOT. We submitted traffic study last, I think, June or July. So we were.
See my point, right?
Yeah.
That MDOT looks at it, yeah, Tile Shop. That M.D.O. looks at it, yeah, Tile Shop's there, but then you put another fast food restaurant. Well, you didn't anticipate that. The timing, the lights are off and so forth.
I understand the concern.
He, so a signal's going in at the site entrance, correct?
That is the, yeah, that's the proposal.
And then the traffic study recommended pet signals where, at the Lots intersection?
Yes.
Okay, I think they're already there. I thought there was pet signals there.
Don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, my concern is you put a light there, somebody could actually try to run across because they, you know, even if there's no pet signal, it could, you could create a safety issue is what I'm saying. So it's something to take into consideration when you're studying this. You put the Lots signal in, but someone coming from, let's say, 275 path or something tries to dart across because they have a green light, it's not safe. You haven't provided the facility, so it's just some, something to look at.
And there was just a pedestrian killed on Ford Road on the other side.
It's a hard road to cross.
Yeah, just, just a week ago.
Yeah. And I can talk about that part of the traffic study. At that intersection, there are pedestrian signals where they can cross when the light does change. One of the items the traffic study came up with was that there's seldom pedestrian traffic there. So those signals will go even if there's no pedestrians. So it's taking away green time from the cars to allow pedestrian crossing. And what it recommends is that there's pedestrian activated signals so that, um, that green time can stay to the cars unless it's activated by a pedestrian for crossing. So it recommends upgrading that pedestrian signal to be activated.
Yeah, and, um, there should be the new countdown signals. I don't know if the flashing hand is not a good design. You, you want to know how much time you have to cross, you know, there's a countdown. Most designers use those now. How were you able to get through all the wetlands? I mean, there was a ton of wetlands. How did you do it?
From a permit standpoint or from a...
Yeah, I mean...
Well, I'm not there yet, but...
Yeah, I mean...
And we've had, I mean, my first two meetings on this project after I walked it were with Eagle and with M.D.O. Because I knew those were the two stopper. This project doesn't work without a light. I mean, you can imagine if I came here and said we're, we're dumping all this traffic on Ford Road and there's no traffic light, right? So that was a, that, that one and wetlands. And we had some very interesting conversations because Eagle has a lot of history, you know, on these properties. So, um, I think the main thing is that, um, we really tried to do a good job of balancing not only the amount of impact, because that's what everybody looks at, how many acres, but also what acres we were impacting. So we worked pretty, we worked very closely with, with Eagle and, you know, Atwell's environmental staff to micro delineate the wetlands. So we went back and said, okay, this is wet, but this is, what is it called? Messier? Yeah, so there's a very high-quality structure, and so we delineated that structure in and around Willow Creek. And then said, okay, that's off limits, let's stay out of there. So even if we have to do a little additional impact, um, let's preserve the highest quality. Um, and that's really, so that was like the balanced job for us of trying to say, well, if we impact a little bit more, it'll be less quality. And that, that's really where we're at right now, and we're between that and the flood plain.
Last thing I have, Patrick, uh, I think you need to study the utility, demand and supply. You have the new residential development going south on Lots Road. I recommend that, let's model this whole thing, make sure that there's enough demand, uh, supply for this intense demand. It's just something the, the engineer has to look at. And that's a great project, looks great.
We'll talk to our engineering division about the, uh, water and sewer demand.
Excellent. Commissioner Janowski?
Like the project a lot, I like the open space. But the major concern that I have looking at it here, I'm looking at the traffic study that was done, 725, one drive going through. So as my colleague mentioned, you know, 725 cars an hour or 6.3 per minute on each side going in and out, that's, that's a lot. So try and wrap my head around it, I have to think about it, but... Secondary, secondary entrance coming in would be, you know, would ease that quite a bit, so.
Would there, would there be at all possibility to get an easement or some sort of a shared access drive through the, the top, the northern boundary of the, where the Gordon Foods property is out to Lots Road? I mean, that's not ideal, but it's secondary access. I understand the issues up at Warren Rowne. But I'm just looking or scanning around here to see where other access could be replaced because I, I agree, I feel like, I feel like we're pouring cars into a funnel right, right there. But, um, but again, I'm sure there's a lot of smarter traffic engineers than I am who can figure this problem out, and I hope that's the case, so, so you understand what the concerns are.
That's okay. Yeah, that was one of my concerns too, is that just having the one-point access into the property, um, just all the traffic that's going to be generated by Chick-fil-A and Portillo's and the hotel and, and, um, uh, and the golf facility. Another concern I had was, um, just if, if Chick-fil-A has a massive amount of stacking, is traffic still going to be able to get back to and from the facilities at the back of the lot? The, uh, Top, Top Golf and, uh, and the hotel, is that going to interfere with access to those facilities?
Yeah, we've had significant, um, conversations about that internally. We've, uh, worked with Chick-fil-A before, we just did one with them in Traverse City that had, you know, uh, an outlet issue, a backup issue for their first couple of weeks. We watched the way they handled it, and we've been working closely with them. We're not overly concerned as a group. We know there's probably going to be a couple of weeks coming out of the gate where it's going to be a little rough, but we're not overly concerned about it as a group.
Okay. And then, um, the ground pole sign that's mentioned in the, the, um, the, uh, the report, where, where is that and how, uh, where, I, I was wondering if the, the renderings that were done of the golf facility, uh, they don't really show that on the rendering, so I was just curious where that would be.
Yeah, I can provide an exhibit, actually, I mean, I can send you real-time photos or also renderings. Basically what it is, it's in the back of the outfield, we call it the Instagram sign. So when you're in the T-bay and you're swinging, you could take a photo, and then you see the Top Golf sign in the back. It's not illuminated, the back of it is completely blank. It's really just to be internal facing for the customers.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood. I thought that was meant to be like for the highway visibility. So, so I did see that on the, the renderings, so thank you for clarifying, okay. Because I'm picturing a pole sign being like a billboard, you know, type of facility sign.
No, just the shared multi-tenant sign.
Okay.
That was one of the evolutions of this project though, was that originally we did have screens out on the, in the outfield that had, um, right, that were showing sporting events or something else. Those were eliminated because of the proximity to 275 and the request that they may be a distraction. So that is one of the points where township staff has advised us to, to move on. And one of the improvements that we made during, to this plan during the process.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
What's width of the main drive coming in? Does it support the Chick-fil-A backup?
Does it meet?
It's only 27?
It's only 27 feet. So the, the conversation has been, you know, if, depending on the size of the backup, if it really starting to back up on that road, um, they work with walkie-talkies and we'll reroute to get the people off the road and queue them somewhere else. That's a conversation we've been having internally.
Okay.
We don't want them, we don't want the stack continuing on the drive-through lane to block traffic coming out of the hotel or on Top Golf from moving southbound. So that's a consideration that we have been looking at.
Okay, cool.
And, and one, one final question for me is when do you propose, when do you plan to open these facilities? What's your goal?
Um, our goal is, uh, ground break in the next summer with deliveries of all the tenants in the following spring.
Awesome. It's very exciting.
Madam Sheriff, I could, one last follow-up question.
Absolutely.
Just super quickly, thanks so much for answering all of our questions. But the last one was, was there any, uh, opportunity to look at acquisition of the parcel to the north that borders Warren? I don't know if that's, was a thought at all, or because of the limit access, there was no thought to, to garnering that parcel?
On the north side of Warren Road?
Um, no, just before, uh, I think it's...
The one, just to the east of your...
Oh, yeah, we did talk to, uh, um, what's her name? Yeah, we did talk to her. Um, it's almost all wet, so there wasn't a lot of benefit for, to that property for us. I think someone else has it under contract early.
Yep.
She might have already sold it.
They do.
Great. Anybody else? Oh, sure.
This is a long way from 275. I just, I'm not telling you, but I have a hard time believing that there's limited access this far.
It's, yeah, it's, I looked at it.
It's the, it's the bridge.
Oh, the bridge, okay.
The bridge, the bridge is what creates the limited access situation. So we can show you the, we have the limited access right away maps.
Makes sense. Anybody want to entertain any, I'm entertaining motions, I guess, so anybody want to make one?
Yeah, I'll do it, so...
Oh, Alan.
Sure, why not?
Can you do a dramatic reading?
No, I cannot.
So, uh, right, right now, um, the public hearing that we held, that would count as the conditional rezoning. So we still have one more public hearing to go officially with the PDD, although I think everything with the PDD has been mostly discussed, but we'll have another chance. So the one motion I would recommend is just on the conditional rezoning, and then we can move on to the PDD portion with the public hearing and subsequently a motion.
Close the public hearing?
We already did that.
We did that, yeah. Yeah.
Never mind.
No, we, we closed it. Yeah, yeah, we aren't part of the public hearing, it was just...
So we're doing the rezoning first, right?
I'd like to make a motion.
Would you please make a motion?
Sure, absolutely.
We would love it if you did.
I would move to recommend approval of the request to rezone with the conditions proposed by the applicant for parcels number 047-99-0018-703, also 048-99-0008-00, and 048-99-0010-00, and 048990012-003, and finally, 04899-0012-004 from C4 interchange service C3 regional commercial and corporate park overlay district to C3 regional commercial and central business district overlay as permitted in section 27.07 of the zoning ordinance as the proposal meets the standards of section 27.07 and section 27.06D4 of the zoning ordinance as stated in the staff report.
Vote.
Right, we have a motion, uh, with a lot of zeros in it, read by Commissioner O'Con and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? Nope, okay, Commissioner O'Con, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con, yes. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zuber?
Yes.
Very good, congratulations, thank you. We're, we're excited, very excited for this. Uh, so Patrick, you mentioned next steps. Uh, we need to go before the, they, they will go before the zoning, or the Board of Trustees.
Uh, that's correct. The next available Board of Trustees meeting, which will be in January, will schedule the first reading on the conditional rezoning application. So that will be coming up, and we'll follow up with the applicant on that specific date.
Okay. And then we, do we need to vote to table the, uh, the PDD then?
Do we have a public hearing?
Uh, correct. So now officially, we're on to, um, item number two in the, uh, in the case. So we previously discussed, uh, Top Canton and many of the elements of the PDD, so we can, we can spare you that part of hearing it again. So now that we're on to the second part, uh, there'll be the same process of opening the public hearing, holding the public hearing, closing deliberations, then the motion.
Okay.
Do we open the public hearing?
All right, we have a motion...
Did you guys call the item first?
Um, we can officially state which item that we're on.
We are on item two, Top Canton LLC considering preliminary PDD for said parcels. And, uh, we already know where it's located and what's proposed there, so I won't read the whole thing. So we have a motion by Commissioner Egenberger and support by, did Commissioner O'Con support that? Okay. And, uh, to open the public hearing, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Anyone want to speak about this proposal that we have been discussing for the past hour and a half? Mr. McCoslin? Awesome.
I'm going to use one more second here to reiterate, and, uh, what the gentleman said towards the end there was exactly right. We need to get rid of the overlay at one time because folks like these, folks like us, we've been bound with cuffs on for all these years with this overlay, it doesn't work. If we get rid of it now, it's a vision into the future. It opens up for people to say, I can do this, I can, because right now, it's still in the mix. It's like, okay, the underlying zoning is C4 with a corporate overlay, that doesn't work. In 2024 is going to be the 30-year anniversary of the corporate overlay. Thirty, 30 years, that's a long time for something that didn't work. So why are we holding on to it? The master plan, we talked about it and over and over and over in the master plan meetings, it doesn't work. It's costing folks like this, folks like us, an immense amount of money, time and energy to not be able to do anything with your property. It's really a taking, is what it is. And it has to go. So if we didn't have a corporate overlay, there would be no item two. It would be allowed. So it's got to go, that's the bottom line. Because not only for these folks, but every other use that we've missed upon for all the years because of the corporate overlay.
Here, yeah.
Right. And it's, it's bad. It's really bad. So we, we finally, you know, that, people say the party boat only comes by every so often. You either jump on or you watch the lights go into the dark.
Where's the party boat?
You know, when the, when the cruise ship comes by, you either get on or, or you're, you're standing at the dock.
Yeah.
And this overlay has let everybody in that district standing at the dock. And the boats keep going by. So it has to be done. We can't just keep waiting and waiting and waiting. It has to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. McCoslin? Okay.
You know, like Dan said, it's been 30 years, it's got to go. I've never seen a town or a community who's regulated theirself into prosperity. Doesn't work, okay? We had the ability to work together there without the constraints of the corporate overlay. This would be a slam dunk project with a lot more, a lot more use, a lot more tax dollars coming in, a lot more benefit to the community. You need to look at it hard. January is the day, the month I heard in regards to, um, master plan revisions. I feel it's a time. It has to happen. If it doesn't happen now, people are going to pass this by. They're going to say, you know what? Those people don't want to get along with nobody.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion by Comis, Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Singh to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Anybody want to expound further? Alan, you want to say more?
No, he wants to...
Oh, oh, anybody want to say anything more about the, the, um, proposal?
I've just got one item to add about the traffic study. Um, the applicants, uh, did, uh, submit the traffic study many months ago. And the reason that the review has taken so long is that, um, the Boulevard project by M.D.O., it's still a process in terms of final designs, and M.D.O.'s working through those final designs diligently. And as they've, uh, worked with the designs and the loon turnarounds and the traffic modeling, the traffic engineering consultant for the township has been waiting on the new traffic models from M.D.O. so that they could plug the data from the traffic study that the applicant had into M.D.O.'s new data so that... so that we had real-time modeling based on the latest designs by MDOT. So, um, one of the benefits is that we'll be, um, having a, a traffic study reviewed and modeled based on, um, the latest designs of the Boulevard, um, which I don't think that's something we've, we've quite had yet. So, um, it's pretty, it's pretty new in that element. Um, the only issue is that, uh, that's taken some time to do. Um, MDOT's been working diligently. Um, we've got the data with our traffic engineering consultant, so I think it's just a matter of days, if not maybe a week or so, until we have those results from the traffic engineering consultant. So, um, that's just the reason for the time. It's just been a process. Everyone who's been working on the project has been working diligently, but it's just a matter of circumstance of, um, merging the final designs and that modeling with the applicant's traffic study and the synchro models of the traffic study to make sure that, um, we've got a good thorough review.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. All right. Commissioner O'Con, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move to defer action on the preliminary PDD application. Application number 047-PDP-7876, pending the receipt, uh, and review of Canton Township's Traffic Engineers Consult Letter regarding the traffic impacts of the proposed development, at which time the planning commission can make findings of facts in accordance with section 27.04 of the zoning ordinance, including findings regarding the traffic impact.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Con and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Uh, Commissioner O'Con, oh, is there any further discussion? Great, Commissioner O'Con, could you please call the vote?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zuber.
Yes. Excellent, motion passes, so we will see you again next month, hopefully. All right, thank you very much. Oh, yeah, absolutely. We're thrilled to have you guys. All right, uh, next item on our agenda is some old business. Uh, we have item number 073SPC7293, which is Greenland, Greenland and Sage. Uh, we are considering site plan, well, we already did the site plan. We are considering some modifications to the site plan, um, for that property, so... Patrick, please tell us all about it.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, the Greenland and Sage, uh, grocery store and bakery was, um, approved by the planning commission and the township board in, uh, 2022, and the site is currently under construction. And at the June 5th and June 28th, 2023 planning commission meetings, the applicant had requested, uh, some plan design changes for the building, the dumpster enclosure, landscaping, and parking. And the planning commission approved plan changes at those meetings, including a building design that included framed brick. Um, as the framed brick has been, uh, applied to the exterior, um, the owner hasn't been satisfied with the, uh, appearance and how it's turned out. And, uh, the owner has requested approval of either of the following options instead. Uh, first option one is to cover the framed brick with metal panel artwork. Uh, some of that's illustrated, um, on the plans, uh, that were in the packet. And then I'll get the screen up and running in a moment here and, uh, show you some additional artwork that the applicant has, uh, proposed as well. And, uh, option two is to remove the framed brick and replace the framed brick areas to look like the rest of the building. So our recommendation is that, um, either one, um, look good, and, uh, staff doesn't really have a preference over which option is chosen, but we believe both of them, um, have, have some benefits in terms of, um, being unique to the building and making it look nice. So if the planning commission is satisfied with either of the proposed building design options, uh, we would recommend approval of the building design and site plan amendments for, uh, the subject use on the parcel. Um, so that concludes staff's comments, and, um, I'll get the screen up and running so we can also project.
Awesome, thank you. All right, um, would the project's sponsor like to add anything to what Patrick said? We'll, we'll wait, it's fine. There we go, okay. Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners. Patrick summarized really what, uh-
Could you, just for the record, could you tell us your name and address, please?
Thank you. Uh, Najim Samwa with CDPA Architects. We are the designers and also the, uh, builders for the Greenland Sage. And I have with me Mr. Siblini, who is the sponsor of the project.
Okay.
So, um, I'm sure you recall, you've seen this a few times before.
A couple, yeah.
And there was, at, at some, uh, at some point, there was a, kind of a discussion on how to handle that area between the windows. And at the last, uh, hearing, uh, there was the direction of having a wood frame, uh, framed with stone. I don't think we were very, I guess, enthused about that at the time, but regardless, uh, we followed the, you know, the, the drawings and plans. And you can see it in the field right now, we are not totally, or Mr. Siblini and, and his partner are not totally satisfied with the look. So, at that time, we had a couple of, uh, so the ideas we have now, we had before, they're not new. One is obviously to remove that stone and make it all brick. That's one option. And the second option is to keep it there, but install a, a perforated metal designs, if you look, if you wish, like on there. Something like the Canton tree over there, some, some designs that, that really enhance the look and also can, uh, also enhance the nature of the business itself.
Mm-hmm.
So-
Okay.
Um, my concern from a design standpoint and also building standpoint, that if we, uh, go back now and remove the brick and try to now make it all the same brick, matching is going, maybe it will be a challenging, you know? Is it doable? Of course it is, but-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So your preference would be to, to add the metal panels?
Yes, and we, we think that, uh, we would like, obviously, those metal panels would be supported right off of the stone, uh, frame that we have. And we would like to push those out, maybe four inches or so, and, uh, perhaps, uh, introduce a hidden light behind there. So at night, you would just see the silhouette, so to speak, of, of, you know?
Yeah, the-
Does that meet the sign ordinance?
Oh.
Well, we've, we've looked at that, the, the metal paneling, um, and we have some other renderings here that the applicant has, um, provided with us. So all of them are, are trees and, and silhouettes, uh, examples. And, um, it's more of, um, just artwork and something that's integral to the building and the architecture, as opposed to the signage. And part of it is that, um, it's artistic, but it doesn't relate to the onsite use or any kind of onsite advertising, so it doesn't include anything that's related to a grocery store or a bakery or other onsite use. So it's, it's purely artistic, there's nothing, um, that, um, either indicates or calls into question of any kind of onsite use. If it was not a grocery store and bakery and it was, uh, a multi-tenant retail shopping center with, um, tenants unrelated to that, it would be art as well. So it could really work in any type of use, any type of, uh, building there. So it is unique more to the architecture than any kind of onsite use or conveying any message.
I have thoughts.
I do too, so go ahead.
I like the metal paneling. That was my thought.
Oh, thank you, okay, that was-
I refuse to something deeper, but I think it looks nice.
I don't know if we have time for talking about all of that. Yeah, my question, I have a question about that though, because the metal panel on the rendering looks bigger than the, the outlined basket weave brick pattern. So would you see the outline behind the metal panel? That would be my only concern.
No.
So that's the edge would be-
No, and I, I would like to maybe add a little nuance to this in here, is that, uh, doing these, these panels, uh, that's a function of, of, uh, uh... Forget the details, they go by square inch and all that, but in order to support that panel, the, the solid part has to be continuous. So I, I would be, uh, happy to share the final designs with, you know, with the planning department. Uh, the idea here, most likely, you would have a solid, about six inches or so around the metal panel there that would sit on that, on that stone.
Okay.
Because first to hide it and second to give it some support, so that we can, uh, uh... They support it with pegs. It's not, uh, they don't screw it into the, into the wall. Uh, we have done this just, uh, down Warren Avenue on a, on a banquet facility that we recently finished in Westland. We used this panel, and it's very, very attractive, actually, and it's-
Yeah.
I'm sorry? Yeah, where the restaurant used to be, you know, that, uh, so, uh, so we think it's a, it's a, an enhancement, definitely, to the, uh-
Yeah, I guess it's just a, a matter of the, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir. Uh, the, the, just, the, the photo that's included in the packet of the, of the basket weave panel looks quite a bit smaller than those panels. So that was my only concern is, I, I would lo-, I like the idea of the panel, as long as it doesn't, like, you don't see those edges coming through part of the panel, if that makes sense. So if the panel only covers that-
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, it has, it has to cover, this is the whole idea, is that we want to cover those.
But, but only cover that and not go up farther.
No, 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 oh, I see what you're saying. No, 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 no.
From this photo, if you zoom out a little bit, Patrick, um, you can see the, the brick, the opening around the windows is quite a bit higher than the basket weave pattern with the stone around it. And if you go to then the rendering-
To your point, yeah.
The renderings make it look like those panels go up as high as the metal surround around the windows. That's my question.
Those, those, yes, correct, correct. No, I, to answer your question, the panel limitation, it would be that stone on there.
Okay.
It would not project beyond that.
Then, then I would say this, that I like that idea better than replacing the brick. Anybody else have an opinion, any of our other?
No, I can see the issue with trying to match the brick being a problem.
It's, and the mortar is almost always harder, too.
Yep.
I, I have a couple of questions, but, um, not regarding, uh, these panels. They look nice, and I think you should go with that. A few months ago, one of the walls fell. What happened?
Uh, what happened is, uh, we had a, uh, obviously, a, a strong winds at the time, and the, uh, wall was, uh, just a s-, a single piece of wall freestanding with no proper, uh, bracing, basically. That's, that's what happened.
So after that, did you do anything to the building material or like? I see that the, some beams were constructed, was that originally-
No, those were part of the design.
It was originally part of the design.
Yes, it's just the, there is two layers of walls. And, uh, the mason decided to start with first layer. And the columns you're talking about, had he did, had he, uh, constructed the two layers at the same time, we wouldn't have, had this situation.
Won't go down, that's what I was thinking, was so thin wall, long, and, uh, you know, it was bound to come back.
It's essentially, uh, it's like a, a cant lever, uh, vertically it was, you know? And you had all this wind, and we even had a tornado touchdown close by at the time, so, uh, we were lucky, so to speak.
Second question is, what's your completion date?
Our completion date is, uh, July.
Are you, are you on time?
Soon, July.
Are you on time, on schedule?
Yes, we are. Uh, if, uh, you drive by there, you see now the windows are being installed. So we intend on, um, having the building weathered tight sometime mid-January, which would allow us to, uh, do interior construction.
Yeah.
Uh, all the parking, uh, all the utilities, uh, the gas is already at the, at the building. Water service is there, electric in two weeks, so it's... Usually those are the long lead items that, that-
That's a beautiful building, it's coming along, it just looks beautiful. I pass-
Lots of here.
-that every day, so these panels also will look beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else? Anybody want to make a motion? Alan, you want to make another motion?
Sure.
You thought, I thought, you thought I'd never ask, didn't you?
Absolutely. It's his last night. I move to recommend approval of, insert option here, uh, metal panels, building design, and site plan amendment for the grocery store and bakery at parcel number 073-99-0001-706, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner O'Con and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion?
Should we add anything in there about the planning department having any oversight about the review, the ultimate overview of the artwork itself?
Like final say on the, the artwork?
Yeah, um, staff can make interpretations of the zoning ordinance and carrying out both the planning division and the building division. So if anything was an interpretation of being signage, then it would be a matter of, um, fitting in the signage unless the PDD was amended.
I wasn't thinking about signage so much as, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want them to come in there with a piece of artwork that has a big metal finger in it or something like that, you know?
I don't think that's gonna happen.
I'm being, I'm going extreme, obviously.
How about if, how about if I, uh, amended to saying, um, metal panels subject to, uh, planning, planning department review?
No middle fingers.
That's fine.
Support.
Okay, we have a revised motion and support by Commissioner O'Con and Watkins. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner O'Con, could you please call the vote?
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Janowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zuber.
Yes. Very good. So next steps, we will, we will just look forward to seeing-
It'll open.
Well, I guess Patrick will look at the drawings and we'll look forward to seeing it open, absolutely.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
All right, and our next agenda item is we have no new business. Awesome. Next item, master plan. Aaron, do you have some exciting and fun updates for us?
Of course I do.
I figured.
Um, I've got a very short PowerPoint presentation, so whenever, Patrick, I can steal your, your cable?
Let's go crazy.
Right. Okay. All right, so, um, this is just going to continue some of the discussions we've had, and then, um, uh, as Patrick did previously, I'm going to kind of lump four and five together, so that way we're just one, one big presentation. So, uh, as I've mentioned before, we are on step five, which is analyzing the public feedback, draft documents, maps, conceptual designs. So, um, these Ford Road conceptual infill designs had come to you previously at the November 20th, uh, meeting. So, uh, based on your feedback, staff's comments, um, McKenna has provided some updated renderings. Uh, they are provided to you at your, at your seats, um, and then, um, like to get some feedback from you, and I'll show you the existing, how the existing aerial looks. So this is right at the corner of, uh, or just at the corner of Ford Road and Lily, on the north side of Ford Road. So you have a big expansive parking lot, you have a couple of outlots here in front where there's, uh, a Panera's, uh, Buffalo Wild Wings, there's a vacant lot, um, to the east or to the right of your slide. If you can see my cursor moving around there, I don't know if you can. And then this is a multi-tenant strip up here where there's a Dunham's, there was a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond at one point, there's a Marshall's, Michael's, et cetera. So there's a lot of expansive parking here and these properties are located within the DDA. So as I had mentioned in our previous discussion, the DDA businesses, the corridor discussions, wanting active public gathering spaces. So this was the original design that you had seen back in November. And there were a number of things, this was a really good, good opportunity, but we wanted a little bit more, we wanted to beef it up a little bit. So these are the updated renderings where they added some more trees to the area. They provided details on how the outdoor space could be utilized for dining, gathering, et cetera. They added a water feature and also provided some details on potential for a public art installation here in the center. They included provisions for stormwater infrastructure, rain gardens here, some pollinator gardens to give it a little bit more, a little bit more juge, some textured and marked crosswalks so people can walk from this gathering space to, you know, restaurants or other, other retail opportunities in the area. Then there's electrical vehicle charging canopies here to the left. And this allows for, the open space here allows for pop-ups, events, food trucks, they've provided some infrastructure for food trucks. So really it's just taking the designs that we, that McKenna had put together previously and just giving it a little, a little kick, a little nudge to the next level. This was the second design, which built off the initial and it added a couple of outlaw spaces here for restaurant and retail. And again, based on the conversations that we had, based on staff's comments, they made some updates and modifications. So it keeps everything that we had discussed or seen on the previous slide and added a little bit more. So there's more landscaping, more opportunities for green stormwater and infrastructure here. There's more event and outdoor dining spaces. And then again, EV charging stations are provided in additional spaces. Now, one thing that we had talked to them about is the potential of using these two buildings as mixed use. So having commercial, retail on the main floor and then having either office or residential up top. You really can't see these, whoops, from these renderings, but that's something that we wanted to discuss with them and incorporate. Again, this builds, just builds off the continuing design. So these are restaurant, retail options that are right there on Ford Road. This one, this building right here on the left is an existing Buffalo Wild Wings, but this one on the right is vacant. There has been plans that we've been looking at and discussing with developer about potential development opportunities there. But this utilizes some outdoor cafe space here along the boulevard, future boulevard, with some outdoor gathering space between the buildings. And one of our commissioners had noted that they liked this, this installation here, this, this concept.
The one of us.
I'm sorry?
It was just one of us.
Just one of us. Yeah, yeah. Not saying, not saying all of you did.
Should I rescind that comment? Because obviously you don't like it.
No, no, no. I'm just kidding.
And this just adds a little bit more to it. So there's, there's outdoor dining space here in the little nook next to the buildings. The pedestrian cafe space is the same. They're keeping the existing street trees and then just added some additional parking to the rear. And number four was more focused on the, the long-term development of this big multi-tenant building. So there isn't anything really that's changed from there. It's just to redevelop the big box into multifamily, office, other market-driven opportunities, you know. It might be something that, you know, indoor recreation might be something that, that comes about, that needs a big, big space like that. But that would be more of a market-driven opportunity. So these are the four kind of phased approach to these conceptual designs, incorporating, like I said, everything that the planning commission had noted, things that the staff had noted. Is there anything additional on any of these four in particular that you would like to discuss or you would like to see expanded or?
Not, not about the plans themselves, just a more of a procedural question or anything else. I love the idea, but given that these open spaces are on private property, and it doesn't need to be addressed now, it'd probably be, have to be done at the time that they're implemented. Because I worry about the maintenance part of it, keeping the grass nice, the water feature, keeping it clean, keeping it, and so many of the common areas that we see throughout the township and the other cities too, get beat up and get, and aren't well taken care of. I mean, I even see, looking along the brick walls, along the DDA corridor, I mean, some of them look like they're a little shabby now too and I, so I would, I would want to, that's the one caution I would have about that. And if there's, I think there's ways we can ensure that that gets done, but I just want to make sure that that, when the time comes, that that does get addressed.
Absolutely. Yeah, there would be, I mean, depending on how the ownership structure worked with these types of, this type of development, whether it's access agreements that we have with that particular property owner or outlaw development, PDD agreements, there would be a clause or a stipulation noting the maintenance schedule, who's going to be responsible for it. All of that would be, would be addressed at that point, to make sure that these are developed and maintained as public gathering spaces, not just, hey, look, we put up a fountain and then it falls into disrepair. That, that doesn't benefit anybody.
Right.
But thank, but that's a wonderful comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I always like to see, oh, sorry.
This, this one looks like it does?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be you 20 years ago?
I don't know, just like somebody just coming out. One of the interns, here you go.
Yeah, yeah, I always like to see outdoor dining area, but I hate it when it's facing west. You know, in the evening when you're going out to eat and you, you know, in the, in the summertime, you don't want to sit in the sun. At least I don't. I don't know. I want to, I want shade. So I like that idea of having that in the northeast L of the front building. Exactly, exactly. Right. No.
But ideally by that, by the time we realize that maybe Ford Road will be different, maybe.
Well, I mean, to go to your point, I mean, this, this whole property is shaped in a, in a grid shape, right? It's following the existing pattern of the parking area and whatnot. So there are some limitations on how things can be not quite so grid-like, but I will take that to them and see if there is something that they can incorporate as opposed to the other, the other renderings which are, were a blank slate. You can do anything you want. These you're, you're putting into an existing form. But I'll take it back to them and see if there's, yeah, see if there's an opportunity to, to add some character.
But it's a concept, so. Anybody else? Okay.
That is for sure.
It's good to have ideas.
Yep.
It is.
I agree.
Okay. Okay. And if anyone comes up with anything else and has any other ideas, let me know. I can forward those on as well. Okay? So moving into item five then, surrounding communities master plans, just wanted to give you a brief update. The city of Westland has reached out and notified us that of their intent to, to plan. Per the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, they're required to do so, no different than we notified surrounding communities when we were intending to plan. I did reach out to them to find out not only what they had envisioned or what, if they had anything in mind for our shared property, our shared community boundaries and what their community engagement strategy is planning to be. But I haven't heard back from them yet. So when I have updates on that, I'll, I'll let you know. And then Superior Township has also notified us that they have created a draft master plan. It's currently available for comment. So I just wanted to provide, they're not really changing anything. They're not making any big sweeping, sweeping changes that would change, change our, our western boundary, but just to give you an idea as to what they're looking at. So this is Superior Township. And you can see just based on the aerial how, how development stops west of Napier Road, right? So everything is pretty built up. You've got Cherry Hill Village, very dense, and then it's all very, very rural agricultural. And then, so they've created their future land use map here. And so they've divided it up into.
Dog's tongue is so distracting.
Sorry?
The dog's tongue.
The dog's very happy. It's a very happy dog.
It's so distracting. It's like curled up. Yeah.
They have it divided in a couple of different sections. So the ones that are most important to us would be this central area here and then the southern Gettys area in the purple. So for this central area, sub-area here, they've identified the uses that they would like to permit, and this is included here. Rural residential, single-family cluster, production farms, open space, natural areas, public institutional facilities. So things that, that are not very dense, right? They want to keep their rural, rural community characteristics. Yep. And then in the purple area to the south, single-family residential, public institution, some attached residential, general office and medical, neighborhood scale and retail services like grocery stores, convenience stores, some restaurants and cafes, mixed use and public parks. So this areas is one of the more denser areas of Superior Township, so, but they still want to keep a more rural neighborhood-esque. They're not, they're not building Targets and big box stores over there anytime soon. So, so that's just what is happening to our west and to our east, but what's next for us? So we have a couple of more, more meetings through, through our master plan process and we're going to continue talking about corridors. We're going to continue looking at the nodes and designs. We're going to be, start talking about sustainability and green infrastructure. That's something that I know that the planning commission is really focused on. So those will be coming to you in, in the next couple of meetings. But then we want to schedule our open house. So this is an opportunity to showcase what we've heard from the public during our events and engagement sessions. And we also want to solicit some feedback on some of the conceptual designs that you have already looked at. So the Cherry Hill Village Town Square project, now a lot of the public has already seen this and we've solicited public from them during the stakeholder discussions, but this gives a broad, broad overview for, for any member of the public who wants to see it. The Ford Road infill conceptual designs that you looked at again today and then the neighborhood nodes conceptual designs. Those will be coming back to you at a future meeting before they go to the public. And then we wanted to talk to them a little bit about maybe some priorities related to the housing types, which we've already talked about. Sustainable design, which we will talk about in, in one of the future meetings. So we have four, four meetings before we would schedule these open house sessions. And we're looking to have those at the end of February, the 22nd and the 24th, in different places and taking place over many hours. So people can kind of come in, look at what we've got, give us some feedback and leave. It's not a, they don't have to sit through a lengthy presentation or listen to me garble on. They can just look at the, the information, give us some feedback, chit chat if they want and, and be on their way. So we're providing these two opportunities for them to, to come at their leisure and, and speak with us. Hopefully we get, get a lot of people. So you'll see it in the focus. We've already published that in the focus. And that'll come out in the January edition and then we'll also publish it in the February edition. So there'll be two, two monthly newsletters go out to every home, every business notifying them of this opportunity. We'll have it advertised on social media. It'll be on the township website. So we really want to try and get, get people coming to this to see what we've been working on and what you have, what you've been working on over the past year.
I have a question. I, maybe I've missed it. I, I don't know. I hope not. Have we really talked about, when we talked about corridors, have we really talked about Michigan Avenue? And what I'm, and what I'm thinking of in particular is Maine and what we do with that long-term as far as zoning and development and that sort of thing. I mean, should be talking about it now if, if we have it. I don't, I don't recall talking about it, so I'd.
We've, we've talked about it. It's been on the transportation discussion and it's been on the corridors discussion. If you want to go in, into it in more detail, we can make sure that we do that at the next meeting.
I'll, I'll go back and look through my notes and stuff and see. But I, I apologize. I just don't remember discussing it.
We're also, it's also going to come up when we start talking about future land use and the future land use map and how we want those certain areas to look. And so the zoning.
I think that's probably more what I'm thinking about.
Yep, that will be coming to you in a future meeting.
Else? All right. Thank you, Aaron. And we have another public comment session, section here. Do you have any, guys have anything further to say?
So I'm going to say this is a 43-year resident of this community, a 328 North Aggerdy Road. I'd like to thank Erin for her efforts on the master plan. This is the first time I've ever seen in 43 years that we had such a comprehensive study of the master plan. So I think if we would have done that some 30 years ago, we would have been in a lot better shape than we are today. Not like we're in horrible shape, but we probably wouldn't have giant parking lots and, and, but you know, that's the past. Let's, let's leave that in the past. Let's, as they say, let's look out the windshield, not the rearview mirror, right? So in those study sessions, which I tried to get as many of them as I could because I found them real fascinating, especially when you'd hear from the, from the, the group side and then the public side, sometimes they were just apples and oranges. But there's a lot of innovation in this community. There's a lot of smart people who want to innovate. And I think the going forward plan is, is to let them innovate. So you say, hey, you know what? Your house don't have to be all brick. Your house don't have to be the colonial look. The challenge is not the current projects we have, but circle back to the older houses and how do you bring those up to speed? Take Plymouth for an example. There's people that want to buy old houses and renovate them or modify them. I asked this 25 years ago, would we ever see that happen in Canton? Now, when we see that happen in Canton, we know we're doing the right thing because that means new people want to come in, acquire old real estate and make it look rejuvenated. Same thing with these parking lots and things like that. We could solve some stormwater and we can get some natural aggregate surfaces in there. We can get some permeable drainage surfaces in there and we can get some water features and water fountains and stormwater that's going to fall at, you know, an inch per hour and we can control that and perhaps work with the county to mitigate this whole thing together. So we don't have flooded streets and flooded roads and cars underwater and, and service upon service upon service. But hats off to at least starting the conversation. Because this is the first time in 42 years that we, I've ever seen it. I don't, I think before it was five years came up, yeah, it looks good, stamp. Five years, it looks good, stamp. So at least we have a starting point. And, and I think it's going to be a joint venture between all of us, planning, building, everybody to say. You know, we need to, we need to lighten a little bit of the regulation and let the innovative people work. As you've seen here tonight, those, those guys are innovative, right? They.
Absolutely.
Who would think they could do that, right? Who think they could, but they came up with an idea. Hey, look, we can put this on this property.
Yeah.
If they would have brought that to the table probably 15 years ago, they would have said no. Absolutely no, get out, that's it, boom, go find somewhere else. So let's try to, let's try to spur innovation, you know?
I just want to add to that though, I, I don't think that's just a Canton thing. I think that's happened.
It's happened everywhere.
A lot of places similar to Canton.
Sure. But I, I think we could set the stage for that.
Absolutely.
Because we're, we're, we're more, we're more of an innovative community when you really look at it. There's a lot of smart people here that, that live here, you know, that work in the area and they're, and they're smart people. And you meet a lot of smart people here. They're, you know, we're not a, we're not a complacent community, by no means. But I think people, people hit the wall when they say, oh, you know, I got to build a house that's brick.
Right.
And there's so many, you know, you know, there's so many different materials now that.
Times are different now.
Yeah, that look like brick, they substitute for brick. Some of them are, are polymers and plastics and rubbers and recycled. You know, there's so many, it's, it's just let each. each project speak for itself, instead of letting all the regulations speak for your project. And I think that's, you're on the right track, and having a lot of public input on this master plan will be very helpful. Get the word out, get the word out huge, and say, look, come in, it'll attract new people that, you know, let's face it, there's a lot of people buying houses here, and there's a lot of people that are going to be buying houses here, because existing houses are a really hot commodity right now, so why don't we take advantage of that? And it's, and it's a good time with this plan, you know, there's, there's so much, you could discuss it for, for hours on end, it's endless, but we have a lot of things to discuss.
We do.
A lot of good things.
Yep.
You know, it's like, what bothers me the most is that flare at the landfill, all those, all those torches running, why can't we harness that power?
Right.
Right? I follow that a lot, there's, there's companies that, that are really getting into that, harnessing that landfill gas, putting it to use, heating structures, using it to raise temperature, using it, you know, there's, there's just so many things that we have going for us other than a pile of trash.
Mm-hmm.
And people could say, wait a minute, that's pretty innovative, right? So, I think that's what we got to focus on in the future, but it's a starting point.
Yep.
Thank them right there, it was, it was, it was, it's a lot of work.
Oh, yeah.
And they've been doing it. So it's, it's good, it's, it's, it's very encouraging.
Thank you.
It really is, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for giving Aaron the shout-out.
Yeah.
All right. Turning red, look at her.
All right, anybody else? Very good, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins, we got the W's adjourning.
All right.
Anybody want to vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So...
Where are we heading?